Okay, folks, let's get things started. I call to order the December 12th Planning Commission meeting. We will start out with invocation and pledge of allegiance. So, ask Commissioner Walker to lead us in the invocation, please.
Oh, his bow. Heavenly Father, help us to listen before speaking. And help us to value and appreciate one another before thinking of our own concerns and anxieties. And continue to remind us that all that we do here today is for the glory of you and for the service of our community. We ask these things in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Come in the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got quite a few folks this evening, so I'll just quickly go through the meeting procedures. Whenever you come forward, if you're signed up to speak, just make sure you speak into the microphone, give us your name and address. Address any comments or questions you may have to the Planning Commission, not to the audience. Any questions you have will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. So, we do understand that you may have strong feelings one way or another. And out of courtesy, unless it's your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. So, this is a fact-finding hearing. There's no need to repeat what has already been said. If the previous speaker has stated the points that you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak, and other speakers will each have three minutes. So, please respect those time limits. Ms. Sweet Dobbs, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Rick Ramek.
Here.
Boniza Sharma.
Present.
Cory Scott.
Present.
Brian Gurkey.
Present.
Garrett Collier.
Here.
Bill Vowell.
Present.
LaDonte Walker.
Here.
Janice Davis.
Present.
And Bart Stafford.
Present.
Okay, so first on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. Can I get a motion for the approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a proper motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and before we approve the agenda that has been published, it's come to our attention that there's a couple of applications that there's still some discovery going on about how it might be designed or concluded or right-of-ways or whatever. So, I'd like to get Mr. Stotter to give a quick update on that.
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, item number four on tonight's agenda, which is case number CU-24-169. It's a request to construct a duplex on lot number one of the Kittleberger and Moore subdivision is being requested to be deferred to the January 9th Planning Commission meeting. Likewise, lot number five, case number CU-24-170. Also, in the Lake Shore Drive-Kittleberger vicinity, another request to construct a duplex on lot number two in the Kittleberger and Moore subdivision has also been requested to be deferred to January 9th. There was a miscellaneous application, number six on the agenda, which was a request for a sign at 1010 Shetty Grove Road. That item has been withdrawn by the applicant. Item seven, which is PS-24-188. It is a preliminary subdivision project at 480 Buena Vista. That item has been requested to be deferred to January the 9th. And finally, item number eight, SPA-24-189, 2500 Block of Park Avenue. It's a large-scale development application for a proposed roller rink, also being requested to be deferred to January 9th. The other thing I'd like to mention is we do have people signed up to speak on item one. We have one person signed up for that, and we have two persons signed up to speak on item number two, both of which are on the consent agenda. So, you can act accordingly on that if you want to, you know, consider a motion to approve the agenda as amended and if you want to remove those items.
So, given that we have people signed up to speak and in consideration of the items that need to be removed, I guess we need to have a motion to move the items from the consent agenda to new business and to strike the items four, five, six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, to defer those to January 9th, yes, sir.
Gotta love that, okay.
So moved.
Second.
All right, very good. So, we have then a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda and a second. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. So, those folks that have signed up to speak on items that will not be heard this evening, of course, you're free to go. All right, very good. So, we have no items on consent. So, let's start with new business. Mr. Stotter, would you please introduce item number one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one on tonight's agenda is case number MISC-24-184. Property is located at 821 Emery Street. This is a miscellaneous application request for wall signs to be placed on the new Hot Springs High School building being constructed on that site. The property is located in the R3 Zone District.
All right, very good. Would the applicant please come forward, give your name and address for the record? And please let us know if there's anything that you'd like to add. You have up to five minutes.
Tom Stevens with French Architects, 827 Central Avenue. We don't really have anything to add. We've submitted a narrative and all the proper paperwork, so if you guys have seen it, reviewed it.
Okay, all right, very good. So, we do have someone signed up to speak?
That was him. I didn't realize that he was the applicant, actually.
Oh, okay, all right, very good. Well, sorry, we had you on the sign-up here, so.
Oh, that was me, yeah, I'm sorry.
No problem at all. Okay, since no one has signed up to speak, do we have any discussion among the directors on this one? Nope.
Would you like me to provide the staff report finding and recommendation on that one?
Yeah, we need to get that in the record.
Okay, I'd be happy to do that. So, the Hot Springs School District seeks miscellaneous application consideration to install wall signage on the northeast and west facades of the new Hot Springs High School building, which is nearing completion. The property is located at 821 Emery Street, again, Zone R3, has future land use classification designation of institutional, and is located in Board of Directors District Number Four. The finding for this request is that the submission requirements for such a request have been met. The requested signs would have an inconsequential impact on the residential character of the surrounding neighborhood. Therefore, the recommendation is to approve the requested wall signs consistent with the provided locations and dimensions with the following conditions, and there are three. Condition number one is the requested signs shall be installed consistent with the application proposal. Number two, the applicant shall obtain necessary permits prior to sign installation. And number three, the signs shall not contain flashing or emitting lights of changing degrees of intensity that shine or flash in a way that can be confused with official traffic signals or emergency vehicles, nor may they shine in such a way as to create a nuisance to occupants of neighboring properties or to obscure the view of pedestrians or oncoming vehicular traffic. And that concludes the staff report.
Okay, very good. So, public discussion is closed. Commissioners, any questions on that? No? Okay. In that case, Ms. Sweet Dobbs, could you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Do we have a motion to approve?
Ah, indeed. Thank you, Mr. Ramek, and a second? Okay, it's been motion and second. So, now can we call the roll?
Yes, sir. Boniza Sharma.
Approve.
Cory Scott.
Approve.
Brian Gurkey.
Approve.
Garrett Collier.
Approve.
Rick Ramek.
Approve.
Bill Vowell.
Approve.
Janice Davis.
Approved.
LaDonte Walker.
Approve.
And Bart Stafford.
Approve. All right, very good. Item number one's been approved. I think Mr. Gurkey needs to make an announcement.
You need to repeat on the second.
Okay, we'll just fix and start then, so, okay. All right.
You're good to sit down, sir.
All right, so we're now gonna go to the second item on the agenda. Mr. Stotter, could you please introduce the next item?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item number two is case number CU-24-185. Property located at approximately 215 Carpenter Dam Road. This is a conditional use application to place or operate an alcohol package sales business from a proposed office retail strip center to be constructed on this site. The zoning of the property is currently C3, which is Office Neighborhood Commercial. The property is located in the Malvern Avenue Overlay District. It has a future land use classification of Neighborhood Commercial Center and is located in Board of Directors Number Six.
All right, very good. Motion to approve merely gets a matter on the floor for discussion. Motion and second do not mean necessarily in favor of an application. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stotter, would you please read the staff report?
Yes, sir. Again, this is a request for conditional use. A little unusual in that they're asking for a use in a building that doesn't quite exist, but the actual strip center does not require any sort of a Planning Commission approval, and the owner knows at this time that he does want to house an alcohol package sales as one of the tenants. So, just to clarify what we're doing here, we are just simply reviewing a conditional use application for the appropriateness of an alcohol package sales at this location. Property located at 215 Carpenter Dam. Adjacent properties are Zone Commercial C3. This property has a common boundary with the Carpenter Park. And then just to the north of this property is the East Ridge Commercial Subdivision, which has several lots within it that have developed. The finding on this application is that the submission requirements for such a request have been met. The proposed retail center is compatible with nearby commercial uses, and the requested alcohol package sales use is unlikely to pose negative impacts to the surrounding properties. So, as far as a recommendation, we do request or we do recommend approval of conditional use application number CU-24-185 to operate an alcohol package sales use from a tenant space within a proposed retail center subject to the following conditions. And there are several. Item one is the development site shall be constructed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan included but not limiting to locations of buildings, drives, parking, signs, and landscaping. Condition number two, all construction and construction activities are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with the minimum standards, codes, rules, regulations, and policies as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, State of Arkansas, or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, separate permit applications shall be made by the applicant to the Hot Springs Engineering Department, and permits shall be in hand for stormwater, drainage, and sidewalks as may be required prior to any work beginning. Condition number four is no development signs are being reviewed or permitted as part of this site plan review. A separate signed permit application, review, approval, and permit compliant with the Malvern Avenue Overlay standards shall be required prior to the installation of any signs on the site. Condition five, the applicant has an affirmative responsibility to demonstrate ongoing compliance with the conditions of this approval. Violation of any of these conditions so imposed shall constitute grounds for revocation or modification of the conditional use permit. Condition number six is days and hours of operation shall be limited to 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday. Condition seven, all exterior illumination shall, including wall packs, shall be full cutoff design, fully downcast and shielded as to retain all illumination on the subject property. Condition number eight, list several things from our engineering department. So, before a building permit can be issued, engineering department requires the following be met. Some drain items such as head walls, stone filter dams appear off property. They need to be in agreement with the adjoining property owner. Number B, in the city right-of-way, maintain a minimum of 15-inch RCP pipe rather than 12-inch. Number C, manholes shouldn't have ladders. And D, stormwater calculations need to be seen to show how much detention is required. E, a segmental retaining wall is mentioned. Reinforcement needs on the property or there needs to be an agreement with the adjoining property owner. Okay, and then condition number nine, construction of the proposed structure shall meet the Malvern Avenue Overlay requirements for masonry facade and extending at least a minimum of eight foot down each sidewall. And number 10, ongoing open space and landscaping maintenance, including vegetative buffers, is required. And that completes the staff report.
Okay, very good. Would the applicant please come forward, give your name and address for the record? And let us know if there's anything you would like to add. You've got five minutes.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name is Mark Rickett. I'm with Rickett Marconi Engineering, 1425 Victoria Lane in Little Rock. We agree, as far as I know, with all the conditions from staff and don't have anything to add to that.
All right, thank you. So, we've got a couple of people signed up to speak. The first one is Suzie Spencer. You have three minutes. Please give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Suzie Spencer. Good evening, Commissioners. I have lived more or less on and off for 42 years at 208 Carpenter Dam Road. I am an officer with Alliance Rubber Company. We're the business across the street from 215. And I just wanted to give a report on the traffic. I know that we're scheduled for widening the road there. On average, every day, there's a minimum of two emergency vehicles that go up and down the road currently. I don't know what the traffic will be like when the road is widened, but I do have a safety concern for that, and I don't know how that will be addressed. Additionally, I know that I personally believe that beer and wine are part of a balanced diet. And there is an alcohol, there is a liquor store within a quarter mile of there. So, I'm not so sure that it is benefit to the neighborhood, but I would encourage all of you all to please consider the quality of life of the houses there. There's been significant development behind the area there, and I don't know how the neighbors feel. And I would encourage you all to please consider how the neighbors feel about how this will affect the traffic there because it pretty much will be on and off the expressway. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Chris Sheppard. Just name and address in three minutes, please.
My name is Chris Sheppard. I live at 126 East Matlock Court in Hot Springs, Arkansas. I am a principal at Taylor Kimkus Architects and the client, I'm helping with this project, and the client asked me to speak. And I just wanted to convey that this is only a partial tenant of a larger development. Mr. Modi has spent several years acquiring property, getting rezoning, and he really intends to do a significant development there as far as retail centers. As far as the use, the area along Carpenter Dam has multiple retail centers recently and Piper Street. I know RDOT is planning to widen Carpenter Dam in the next five or so years. Who knows when that will actually happen? But I know that the street will be widened, and we've left room to kind of address any turn-ons or widening that occurs with that. But I just, again, wanted to convey, Mr. Stotter also said, this is only a partial tenant of a development that could have eight or 10 businesses in it. So, I think it is kind of in keeping with the growing area. it is kind of in keeping with the growing area, and it's a use that is already in the surrounding area, and it's just this is another one in the area, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else signed up? That's it? So Commissioners, any questions on this one?
Just for the record, on the condition item number six, as far as correction, nine A.M. to ten A.M. Friday and Saturday, it should be ten P.M.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good point. Yeah, this one's a little bit different in that this is really a conditional use request, and we don't have the, you know, it's not really about the actual plans at this point, so it makes it a little bit different, and probably only have so many conditions to consider on this one, I would imagine. So any other questions from Commissioners? Okay, in that case, Ms. Sweet Dobbs, could you please call the roll to approve?
Yes, sir. Rick Remick.
Approve.
Puniza Sharma.
Approve.
Brian Gurkey.
He's recused.
Oh, he's recused. Garrett Collier.
Approve.
Corey Scott.
Approve.
Janice Davis.
Approved.
LaDante Walker.
Approve.
Bill Vowle.
Approve.
And Bart Stafford.
Approve.
All right, very good. That one passes. So, very good. So, Mr. Stotter, could you please introduce the next item, and I believe is now the last item on the agenda?
Yes, sir. Okay, so item number three is R Z dash two four dash one eight six. The approximate address of this property is eleven oh eight Higdon Ferry Road. This is a zoning change application request from current R two and R three zone districts to C four zoning for approximately eighteen acres of land, which is located at the intersection of Lake Shore Drive and Higdon Ferry Road.
Okay, very good. A motion and a second to approve merely gets it on the floor, the matter on the floor for discussion. Motion and second don't mean that you're necessarily in favor of the application, so may I please have a motion and a second to approve the item with staff findings and recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Mr. Stotter, would you please present the staff report?
Yes, sir. Property owner Kilman Catherine and Roe Family Trust seek C four regional commercial slash open display zoning for approximately eighteen acres of land located at the intersection of Higdon Ferry Road and Lake Shore Drive. This property consists of three separate parcels with the following R P I D numbers, which is five two three eight six, five two three eight four, and five two three eight one. The subject properties are currently zoned, again, R two and R three. They have future land use classifications of residential low and residential medium high, and this property is located in Board of Directors District number four. The project name to stated on the zoning change application is Home Depot Hot Springs. The subject properties are located at approximately eighteen, eleven oh eight Higdon Ferry Road, and consist of three contiguous and undeveloped parcels totaling approximately eighteen acres of unplanted land. Hot Springs Code Section sixteen dash two dash fifty-five states in part, under the C four zone district concept and description, that the C four zone district represents the largest scope of commercial development in the city. C four zone districts should be located at major arterial interchanges so that traffic will not normally proceed into the densely populated areas of the city. This district allows for regional shopping centers and so-called big box developments. It is also appropriate for businesses requiring large areas of open display that require a large amount of land for product storage and traffic maneuvering. Hot Springs Code Section H S C sixteen dash two eleven E one lists specific findings zoning change application requests are to address. This application responds to these findings in the following way. The application narrative describes in part the applicant's desire to develop this property into a one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-two square foot Home Depot Home Improvement Store, along with other related site improvements. The narrative also asserts in part the application meets required findings for demonstrating compatibility with surrounding zoning and development, consistency with the objectives of the zoning code, and response to a significant change in the surrounding physical, economic, land use, and other conditions. I'll summarize each one of those findings. Number one is the demonstrates compatibility with surrounding zoning and development. Adjacent and nearby properties contain a mixture of commercial, manufacturing, religious, and residential uses. The requested C four zone would be compatible with the surrounding developments and zoning along this stretch of Higdon Ferry Road. The second one is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code. The C four district concept and description, again, states in part, C four district should be located at major arterial interchanges so that traffic may not normally proceed into the densely populated area of the city. This district allows for regional shopping centers and so-called big box developments. Subject property is located at the intersection of Lake Shore Drive and Higdon Ferry Interchange and is large enough to accommodate a big box development. The application request is consistent with the concept and description of the C four zone district. And then thirdly, the request responds to a significant change in surrounding physical, economic, land use, and other conditions, as a significant widening project of this section of Higdon Ferry Road was completed in early two thousand seventeen. This widening project imposed, improved Higdon Ferry Road to a five lane thoroughfare design with turning lanes and the installation of new pedestrian sidewalks and bike lanes providing multimodal forms of transportation on both sides of the street. Higdon Ferry Road appears to be well positioned to facilitate development and the redevelopment along this important city corridor. This widening project is considered a significant change in physical conditions for this property. A traffic impact analysis dated September two thousand twenty-four was submitted for the project and for the Home Improvement, Home Depot site. The traffic impact analysis evaluated multiple site and vicinity factors, including but not limited to existing intersection lane assignments, traffic controls, existing weekday peak hour volumes, A.M. and P.M. peak hours, trip distribution, build out total traffic volumes, Home Improvement Store trip generation forecast, and A.M. and P.M. peak hour delay level of service summaries. The findings of the report are summarized in the executive summary, which states in part, based on the analysis for build out two thousand twenty-six and Horizon two thousand thirty-one total conditions, the studied intersections are anticipated to operate at an acceptable level of service during the weekday A.M. and P.M. peak hours, with the addition of the site traffic from the proposed Home Improvement Superstore. Therefore, the report recommendation states, based on the preceding traffic impact analysis, there are no off-site traffic improvement recommendations. If rezoned to C four, this property would be afforded the complete list of permitted and conditional uses as detailed in the city's table of permitted uses, found in Hot Springs Code Section sixteen dash two dash one fifty-two. So as far as a future land use map finding, the property's future land use classification of residential low and residential medium high designated prior to Higdon Ferry Road widening and the construction of the fairgrounds crossing Regional Shopping Center are incompatible with the requested C four zone. Therefore, a future land use plan map amendment to Regional Commercial Center is recommended, which would support the requested C four zone district. And as far as a finding on the zoning change request is that the applicant demonstrates that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility, demonstrates compliance with the required zoning change findings. So as far as a recommendation goes, we are recommending that you recommend the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map, designating the property C four, because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding zoning and development, is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, and responds to a significant change in the physical, surrounding, and economic land use conditions, and also to amend the future land use map, designating the property Regional Commercial Center. And that concludes the presentation.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stotter. Applicant, could you please come forward? Give us your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Yep, thank you all for your time tonight. Austin Edon with Kimley Horn, eleven seven twenty Amber Drive, Alpharetta, Georgia. Mr. Stotter did a good job, and I have nothing else to add.
All right, thank you very much. Don't think we have anybody signed up?
No, sir.
On this one? Okay, very good. So public discussion on the item is now closed, so Commissioners, any questions?
The only thing I'm gonna miss is the daffodils in spring. I think it's a good project.
Anything else? I have to say, the traffic report could have put anyone to sleep. There must be fifty pages of analysis there, none of which meant much to me, except for the colored pictures with the arrows. That was helpful, but anyway, thank you for that. So no more questions on the item, then? Ms. Sweet Dobbs, would you please call roll on the motion to approve?
Yes, sir. Janice Davis.
Approved.
LaDante Walker.
Approve.
Bill Vowle.
Approve.
Garrett Collier.
Approve.
Brian Gurkey.
Approve.
Corey Scott.
Approve.
Rick Remick.
Approve. It's about time for Home Depot to get here.
Puniza Sharma.
Approved.
And Bart Stafford.
Approve.
All right, very good. Item passes, so the next item on our modified agenda is the Director's Report.
Yes, sir, I do have one thing to report tonight. In an effort to celebrate and preserve the places and buildings that represent Hot Springs' rich history, the City of Hot Springs is in the process of preparing our first Heritage and Historic Preservation Plan. This effort is being supported through a grant from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program and the National Park Service. The city has contracted with M K S K, a national urban planning firm, to assist with facilitating this project. The new plan will help determine the role historic preservation has in creating new jobs and businesses, identifying buildings and places worthy of future preservation, and enhance the effectiveness of existing preservation programs and policies. So we're excited to get started with that. The consultants with M K S K have been in Hot Springs this week. They've been very busy. I think they left just a little earlier this afternoon heading back. They conducted over fifty stakeholder interviews with a wide range of citizens in our community, so they got an earful. We did a tour, so we kind of got their feet wet, showing them around. I think they were impressed with what they saw. They'll be coming back early next year to have a more in-depth and more engaged work session, but just for informational purposes, we thought we'd let, make sure Planning Commission was aware that that plan was being developed, and we welcome any and all participation that you might be interested in giving to that, so...
Yeah, I'm glad to hear it. I think this is a great effort. What's the total scope in terms of the areas that it will cover?
Oh, it's citywide. It's a citywide preservation plan, so to our knowledge, the city has never had a whole citywide type of historic preservation plan effort, so it should take looks at all parts of our city, so we're looking to have an all-encompassing preservation document that we can use to guide historic preservation decisions moving forward, so...
What's this costing the city?
The grant funds, well, I mean, it doesn't cost the city anything. It's all funded through a grant. Now, we did request and receive grant money from the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program, so, I mean, there is a cost involved, but it's just not a city cost. It was, it's being funded through grant funding.
Very good. Anything else?
That's all I had to report.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I might make a motion as we adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you all very much.